Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the Stanley County Board of Commissioners regular meeting to order for March 19th. Good evening, welcome everyone that is here this evening. If you will join Vice Chairman McIntyre in our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
This devotion tonight will be a little different than times past and what we usually do. I'd like to read something for you tonight entitled "Did You Know?", sent to me by a good friend of mine, and it just said to me kind of where our country is today, and I thought maybe it would be appropriate to read this tonight. As I read this, if you wish to do so, feel free to bow as in prayer, or if you don't desire, then that's fine too, but I'd like to read this for you this time. "Did you know, as you walk up the steps to the building which houses the US Supreme Court, you can see near the top of the building a row of the world's lawgivers, and each one is facing one in the middle, who is facing forward with a full frontal view? It is Moses, and he is holding the Ten Commandments. Did you know, as you enter the Supreme Court courtroom, the two huge oak doors have the Ten Commandments engraved on each lower portion of each door? Did you know, as you sit inside the courtroom, you can see the wall right above where the Supreme Court judges sit, a display of the Ten Commandments? Did you know there are Bible verses etched in stone all over the federal buildings and monuments in Washington DC? Did you know James Madison, the fourth president known as the father of our Constitution, made the following statement? 'We have staked the whole of our political institutions upon the capacity of mankind for self-government, upon the capacity of each and all of us to govern ourselves, to control ourselves, to sustain ourselves according to the Ten Commandments of God.' Did you know every session of Congress begins with a prayer by a paid preacher whose salary has been paid by the taxpayers since 1777? Did you know fifty-two of the fifty-five founders of the Constitution were members of the established Orthodox churches in the colonies? Did you know Thomas Jefferson worried that the courts would overstep their authority, and instead of interpreting the law, would begin making law and oligarchy? The rule of few over many. How then have we gotten to the point that everything we have done for 220 years in this country is now suddenly wrong and unconstitutional? Let's put this around the world, and let the world see and remember what this great country was built on: the Holy Bible and belief in God. And all of God's children said, "Amen." Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chairman McIntyre, appreciate that. Everyone has the agenda in front of you. Is there any adjustments, or do I have an approval of the agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Eifert.
I'll make a motion we approve as presented, sir.
Got a motion from Commissioner Eifert, second from Vice Chairman McIntyre. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item one, Retirement Award Presentation, Marla Lukasch. Marla Lukasch began working for Stanley County Home Health on January the 5th, 1998, as a public health nurse. Marla is married to Daniel Lukasch, and together they have Mike and Jake, daughter-in-law Amanda and sweet precious granddaughter Addie, who is four years old. In her retirement, she plans to spend more time with her family, especially Addie, as well as enjoying all sorts of crafts: flower and vegetable gardening. Marla has always been a hard worker, taking much pride in her work, showing much compassion for her patients and fellow coworkers. She has always tried hard to provide the best possible care for her patients and help others any way she can. All her patients loved her, and as well as her fellow coworkers. She will be missed greatly, but is wished the very best, and she certainly deserves it. Marla, would you join us up front? Here's something that we have gotten, appreciate your service, presented to Marla for faithful and dedicated service to the citizens of Stanley County. On this occasion, of your retirement, we intend our sincere appreciation for your service, and wish you even greater achievements in the future. Presented this night in the name of the March 2018 Stanley County Board of Commissioners.
Absolutely, thank you. Thank you very much.
Enjoying it.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
Item two, Veteran Services Recognition Award, presenter, Mr. Rod Barbie.
I'd like to thank Marla, too. We grew up together at Pleasant Grove Baptist Church. She's not old enough to retire yet. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, all the Commissioners. I'll introduce this fellow beside me. This is Mr. Paul Hummel. He's the President of Stanley County Veterans Council, also the Commandant of the Marine Corps League here in Stanley County, and a Commander of the local VFW. Well, let me tell you a little something about the Veterans Council. You guys help fund it every year. Not a whole lot of money there. We got some citizens in Stanley County to step up and help us fund the things we need to do as far as helping veterans with their power bills, their water bills, eviction notice. We've got a lot of things that veterans need, and the funds are very limited. And tonight, we want to come forward, and I hope this doesn't upset this gentleman or his wife, because they've been very instrumental in the last two years of funding events that we have. Yes, we have placed flags during Memorial Day, and all the veterans' graves, and the Veterans Day Parade, but we've got to pay these bills for these veterans and help assist them. And we've got two citizens here in Stanley County that has just helped us out tremendously. He's not aware of this. In the last two months, I think everybody on the board has been touched by a military funeral here in Stanley County, D of V Chapter 12. Okay? They were in dire need of a new bugle system for the last rites of the veterans of Stanley County. The funds this gentleman's donated has helped purchase that, and it's paid for. This fund, when I took over this position seven years ago, was so low, we couldn't help anybody. But due to public contributions and the board coming to us every year, we're now able to help veterans here in Stanley County. And at this time, I'd like to turn this over to Mr. Paul Hummel and let him present an award of recognition. We had two individuals, unfortunately, one couldn't make it, but I'm going to turn this over to you, Paul.
Thank you, Rod. And this award, first of all, I'd like to thank all the Commissioners, because without your help and assistance, hey, we wouldn't be a whole lot ahead of anything. But we appreciate everything you can do with the funds that are available. We're going to continue spreading our joy into the community and helping these poor veterans. But when it was brought to my attention that this couple does some extraordinary things, I said, "Well, hey, we..." I'm a big fan of recognizing and patting on the back. And I kick them in the butt if needed, too. I mean, this is what we do. It's a Marine thing, I know. But on this, I'm going to ask if Chairman McIntyre, would you mind coming down here so we can shake your hand, please?
That's Vice Chairman.
Oh, Vice Chairman, I'm sorry.
Yes, he's Vice Chairman.
There's the Chairman over there. Now, this was supposed to be for both. And here's another Marine thing, just so you veterans know. If you're on time, you're kind of late. That's what we look at. Mr. McIntyre, the Veterans Council of Stanley County would like to thank you for your continued support to all the veterans of this wonderful county. Sir, this is for you and your wife.
I'd like to read this. In appreciation for Gene and Sue McIntyre, the Veterans Council of Stanley County would like to thank you for your continued support for all the veterans of the county. And that's heartfelt, and I thank you, brother.
Thank you, and it's heartfelt right here, too.
Appreciate it.
As long as you just took your alarm out of this thing.
There's no alarm.
There's a slow camera around here.
Okay, the camera's out there. And I'm sorry my wife couldn't make it.
Well, if she was not feeling well, we wish her the best.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your time.
I'll plug her back.
Hang on, don't y'all run off, we want to get down there.
Yeah, okay, yes. Come on down.
Great, great.
So I take my specs off.
Go, go, go right there.
Almost thinks I'm Paul.
Come on over, bro.
Down there, a cool army will be right beside you.
Thank you very much.
He's wearing a blue jacket.
Thank you very much.
I'd just like to say one thing. It doesn't take much. I mean, we've given some money, over the past couple of years. We've chosen some charities. This is one of our number-one charities. I never had to serve in the service, but my father-in-law did, and I know a lot of people did, and we just want to help our veterans all we can. Thank you for that, sir. We didn't do it for recognition, we just...
I know you didn't. I know you didn't.
Gentlemen, you guys have a great day.
Good to see you again.
Behave yourself. Thank you, sir. Next up, here's the Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Here's the Vice Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Addie.
We gotta go.
Okay, thank you.
I'm the VFW.
Thank you all.
Peter, you're also.
I'm next. Paul, you don't, you're not up.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Let me get my laptop out of there.
All right, item three, Proclamation declaring April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Ms. Dolly Clayton. Started my morning out with Dolly, so I'm going to finish finishing it out.
That's right. So, good evening. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be before you today to request that you do this resolution proclaiming April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. I am pleased to say that the Consolidated Human Services Board has already passed this resolution, and so I'm hoping that you will do the same, recognizing that children are our most valuable asset, and therefore, we want to do everything we can in our community to protect them. And so I will read through the proclamation. Resolution proclaiming April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable assets, and whereas all children deserve to have the safe, stable nurturing homes and communities that they need to foster their healthy growth and development, and whereas child abuse and neglect are a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life of the community, and whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, knowledge of parenting, and child development, and concrete resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children, ensure that all children grow to their full potential, and whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, and now therefore we, the Stanley County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders and businesses to increase their participation in our effort to support families thereby preventing child abuse and neglect, and strengthening the communities in which we live. So I hope that you will pass this resolution.
Thank you, Dolly. Any questions or anything, Ms. Clayton?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lahon.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the proclamation of April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Got a motion by Commissioner Lahon, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion carries, seven zero. Thank you, Dolly.
Thank you so much. And just before I leave the podium, I would like to say, on April the 10th at 5:15, the work of the Butterfly House will be supported by Walk Away Child Abuse, and so they're going to do a walk and a balloon release in honor of children. And so I will provide this information to Ms. Brummett. And then also, on Friday, April the 27th, they're going to have a breakfast buffet for, it's called the Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Breakfast. And so if you're available, I hope that you will support these causes and support the work we're doing as we increase awareness of child abuse in our community, and so that we can do as much prevention effort as possible.
Thank you very much, Dolly. All right, item four, 911 Public Hearing to Consider Renaming Barnwood Lane, presenter, Andy Lucas.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm actually going to take this item due to the loss of one of our employees this weekend. Karen is attending services, and so she sends her regrets, but I know you all will understand. We have before you this evening a public hearing and a request for naming a private road off of Silver Road. And the reason for that is there's so many, there's now A, B, and C, and D, and it becomes very difficult for law enforcement in trying to respond when you have all those letters for those roads. And so just given the volume of homes and other structures that are going on off of Silver, they're asking for it to be renamed, and they're recommending Barnwood Lane based on the process they've gone through, which is fairly comprehensive, to get names and recommendations from the adjacent landowners. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, but the board will need to hold a public hearing and then take action that you choose.
Any questions from board members for Mr. Lucas? Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against the renaming or the naming of Barnwood Anyone here wishing to speak for or against this? Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Swain.
I move to accept the recommendation of the 911 Director to name the current private drive to Barnwood Lane.
Got a motion to move forward with naming the private drive of Barnwood Lane. I have a second. Second by Commissioner Morgan. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion carries, seven zero. All right, item five, Stanley County Schools Capacity, Demographic Trends, School Choices and Taxes to Fund Education, presenter, Peter Shudo.
Juan, thank y'all for having me. Now I just got to figure out where to... Oh, down here? Oh, there we go.
Just click that to move your thing.
Okay, just click it once and it goes?
Click it once and it goes, and then if you get stuck and you go too fast, you can click this other one and it'll hit.
Okay. On the job training, man, thank y'all. Hey, first of all, I want to thank you being here, and before I start, just want to give a shout-out to Alicia Holland and Becky Broadway. They're part of the people in charge of your Stanley County Government Relay for Life Team. They called me about a couple of weeks ago about doing a 5K or something, so we threw together that St. Patrick's Day 5K Pie Day, and we had pie and ran, and it raised $562 for Stanley County Government's Relay for Life Team. So we appreciate y'all doing that. First of all, I just want to thank y'all for, like I said, thank y'all for having me. You know, my reason for being here is, you know, we've talked about schools to death in the last three or four years, and it's going to be budget time. And this is my first presentation, I'm taking this presentation to all the elected bodies I can get in front of, and civic organizations, and the Board of Education, to kind of give some fact, just basically some facts out there about our schools, you know, and to you guys as elected officials, especially the county commissioners and the Board of Education, you know, the ones that are going to have to work together and make decisions to move Stanley County forward, and then I'm going to these other municipalities, because at some point, and if they do decide to either, you know, put up another tax referendum, or to consolidate schools, or build new schools, or do whatever they have to do, it's going to take the entire community to get behind it rather than fighting it. They need to just, you know, I feel they have these figures out there, people will kind of see. This is basically the slide here, other than, since 2001, other than 2004 and 2005, the attendance in Stanley County schools has declined in 15 of the last 16 years, and we've lost 1,763 students since 2001, 2002. And here's your enrollment levels at the Stanley County Elementary School. They've kind of looked like they've remained pretty much constant over the, since 2014. And this is your current, Stanley County current elementary school capacity. And I got here the dates from the first of the year, in October, and then February. I highlighted Oakboro, because one thing of interest is that of all, you know, the elementary schools, they kind of shuffled their numbers around, they got the same amount of kids. Oakboro lost more kids than any other student, they lost 18 students, you know, from, since the first of the year. And now with the total, there's 3,988 elementary school students, and we have room for 5,355 students when you count mobile homes. That's a 75% capacity. When you take out the mobile homes, there's 5,055 with 78% capacity. Now, I got a, I posted this today on Facebook, and the guy, John Gibson, posted, "Why do you count the dilapidated trailers in your totals?" And here's why I count what he calls dilapidated mobiles in our totals. The Board of Education has the power to not use mobile units, but they have used mobile units to educate our kids for years, and as long as they're available to use, you have to count them in the capacity totals. You know, and one comment, I think that a lot of times, people hate mobile units, but they would rather keep mobile units rather than do the uncomfortable thing of redistricting or closing schools. And basically, just going to say, technically, we don't have empty desks sitting there. I'm using that as analogy. We have capacity in our elementary schools as they sit right now for 1,367 more kids. And if we take away the mobiles, there's still capacity of 1,076 kids. Now, whoops. Now, we go to the middle schools, you go to the enrollment levels of the middle schools, that's pretty consistent. Now, if you look at the totals here, we've had a lot of, there's a lot of space available in the middle schools also. With 1,784 middle school students, you have room for 2,558 with the mobiles and 2,378 without mobiles. And one thing I want to bring this to everybody's attention, you know, everyone knows that the school board is over budget this year. And a week ago, we had temperatures at 28 degrees in the morning, and 45 to 50 degrees at a high, and they had a policy in place to turn the elect, turn the heaters off at 2 o'clock in the afternoon to save utilities. And look at all the, look at all the empty rooms that they're heating and they're keeping all around, all around the place. Somehow skipping, so how did, what did I do again? Last viewed? There we go, there we go. See, I'm getting the hang of this. So now if you look at the empty desk at the middle school, we have 798 empty desks with mobiles and 714 empty desks, and, hang on. Now, if you go back, the school with the most kids is West Stanley with 561 kids, so we have room for another West Stanley Middle School plus extra kids. Okay, let's look at the high schools. The high schools where we took a big hit, since we've been taking a big hit. And mind you, when I'm talking about this presentation, we also have Stanley Early College and Stanley Academy, but as far as this presentation goes with the capacity, I'm not using these in these four traditional high school numbers. And then if you look at the capacity levels, with 2,100 high school students, we have room for 3,300 more and 2,900 without, with, not using mobile units. Look up at Almarl's numbers if you can. Almarl has room for 760 kids, and even if you take out the mobile units, they have room for 730 kids. They have 396 kids enrolled at Almarl High School. You know, I know a lot of times, people like to live in the past with their glory days, as with Bruce Springsteen said, but at the time, like 12 years ago or 13 years ago, Almarl had almost 700 kids at that school. So they're running at 52 and 54% capacity. That's a lot of empty space. And people notice that when they drive down Park Ridge and they see the lack of cars in the parking lot, people go, "Man, I remember the day when that place was full." And so in our four high schools, we have room for 1,200 more kids to fit in there. And we only have, I think it's 2,000 elementary school, I mean, 2,000 high school kids. So if you look at our 19 traditional high schools, you know, there are 7,953 kids in our 19 traditional schools, and we were just using 70% capacity. We have room for 11,298 kids. I think at our peak, we had somewhere over 10,000 kids at our peak. Now, if you look at from, from four years ago, if you look at the capacity percentages, in 2014, seven schools were above 80% capacity, and one of them, I believe that was Central, was over 100% capacity. And we had 12 or below 80% capacity. As you see, we're losing students. We have five schools above 80% capacity, and 14 schools are now below 80% capacity. And then the school size, and thank you for calling me, Commissioner Swain, this morning so I could clarify this a little better. This is from the NCDPI School Report Cards, it's on the Stanley County Schools website. When you look at the, look at around the state, everyone says we don't want big schools, we don't want big schools, but if you look at our sizes compared... But if you look at our sizes compared to around the state, at the elementary schools, we average 362 kids. And around the state, there's 493 kids average per school. Middle school, we have averaged 496 and 634 is the state average. That's just average. So we're still pretty, all our middle schools are still pretty small. And the high school, and got the asterisk there, with the high schools, it says we average 425 kids. They add in those numbers. They count total high schools. So the state, they add Stanley Academy's numbers and Stanley Early College's numbers, which kind of skews it to a little lower level. But they do the same thing all across the state with every high school. So everyone's high school is skewed a little bit to the lower side. You know, the one thing I looked at that stands out to me is on the bottom one with the teachers' levels. In the high school, we average 29, 29 teachers and there's 54 average in the state. And what I think about when I see that number there is the lack of opportunities that we're able to teach the kids. You know, even if we have, if you take out Stanley Early College and another one, we have more teachers per high school still compared to the state. Look at all the classes you're not gonna be able to offer people. And I know I talked to the new superintendent, Dr. James, and he was telling me about how over there in Montgomery County, they had, they used the technology where they had a teacher that taught in like West Montgomery and they had the video screen and they taught in East Montgomery. And I remember I, I did a presentation for the high school a few years ago, West Stanley. And they had a, one of those classes with North, with Almarl. And they had like 15 kids in one class and 17 kids in the class on the, I mean, seven kids on the class. So they had like 22 kids total. And they had the paid teacher in West Stanley. Then they had like a proctor or someone else was in the room at the other school. So in essence, to teach those 22 kids, you're paying for a teacher at another salary just to, you know, rather than having them all in one class. And one thing about the buildings, I get down to buildings, and there we said that the buildings aren't a big cost percentage wise of the schools. You know, I think payroll is like 80% of the school system's budget. But with that payroll, you gotta look at efficiencies. And when you're running inefficient payroll by having too many teachers and too small classes, that's where, that's where you really waste a lot of money. One thing was kind of interesting, I counted, and this is pretty close, I could tell you, this is the one slide that's pretty close to being accurate because I had to hand count this stuff and doing the little things. But basically, in the state of North Carolina, there's 384 high schools with football teams. And of those schools with football teams, as far as size, Almarl is 361 out of 384. South Stanley's 351. North Stanley's 320. And West Stanley's 257 out of 384. And, you know, that's for one county to have all those small schools, you know, shows there. And this is back in the, you know, as you remember, y'all remember when Almarl won all those football championships? And they didn't do it when they had, you know, so few kids. And also, one thing that's always, uh, people talk about, when you talk about consolidating high schools, is the lack of opportunity for kids to play sports because you're combining, you know, you're combining two sports teams. So you're losing some kids. Well, look at what's happened at Almarl, on the other hand. There's really, there's no opportunity to girls to play soccer, boys to do golf, or boys to play tennis this spring at all. You know, over the years, you see where there's been some schools that can't support a JV team and stuff like that. And also, and this whole thing, and I, and I really don't, I think people don't grasp the knowledge of it when people blame the Stanley County school system for losing kids or blaming this one or that one. It's not anybody in particular. It's a whole, a whole lot of factors. And sure, there may be a few people that leave the school system though they don't like it. But a lot of it is the changes in the delivery of education. And if you look at the charter schools, you know, they started in North Carolina with 34 charter schools back in 97. And then they had that limit of 100 charter schools till 2011. And then once they raised that, they went from, they're up to 174 charter schools throughout the state. And there's really no sign of those slowing down. And then the cooperative innovative high school programs, that's your Stanley early, that's your Stanley Early College programs and, and well, your, yeah, your early college programs and stuff like that. And that's growing. They have 125 of those in the state. Homeschoolers, and we've talked about homeschoolers. And I just put those numbers up there. That's just not a trend that's just in Stanley County. It's, it's all over the place. You know, it's easier to homeschool their kids now. And the other one that's interesting that you're gonna see a lot of growth with kids is the private school vouchers in North Carolina. Since they started that program, they've, they've helped out. It went from 1,200 the first year to 5,700 this school year. And that's growing. And then another question is, how will new schools in our region impact the Stanley County school system's student count? What that means, and when you, when you think about our education here, it's not just Stanley County. We have to see what everyone else around us goes. Tillery Charter Academy is gonna open in 2019, 20. They broke ground for the new high school that's over next to the Community College over in Troy. And then of course, I think Montgomery County Early College is there. I think Matt, Commissioner, I think you work over there. How many kids do they have over there? Do you know about a couple, at, at the Early College?
Twenty.
They started, and this is the first year? Yeah, and then is it gonna, it's gonna progress every year? Yes, and then that's almost like what, what Tillery Charter is doing. They're starting with two when they're progressing. And you gotta ask yourself, how are, how are, how's what Montgomery County students gonna impact Stanley County schools? We currently have kids from Montgomery County schools coming to Stanley County. We have kids from Anson County coming into Stanley County. This gives them another choice. There are kids from Montgomery County that go to Greystone. And what happened is, and like Montgomery County kids, a lot of those kids go to, go to both Greystone. And when you worry Charter opened up in Ashboro, some of those kids started going there. And what happens when Montgomery County kids decide not to go to Greystone and maybe try these options, what it does if it leaves more openings for kids from the Stanley County school system to fit into Greystone. And I heard that they had, they had 125 openings at Greystone and they had 250 people apply for, apply for them this year in the lottery thing. So, you know, like I said, it's really not anyone's fault that this is happening. And facilities, part of the thing is facilities. You know, they, they had this study, the Pinnacle Architect, back in 2015. $22 million plus is what they're looking at to bring the schools up to code. Two comments I want to read out of this thing is that, about the elementary schools. One of the comments was, "The fact is, very old elementary school facilities at Baden, Locust, Norwood and Oakboro exists. The older facilities at these schools are 50 to 100 years old and have outlived their intended use." Okay? High schools, likewise, the older facilities at Almarl North, South and West are in need of upgrading and replace, or replacing. The facilities constructed in the early 60s are also becoming expensive to maintain. You know, then also, I mean, I think with some, I think Commissioner Burleson and Lawhan with two. I mean, we went on that tour of Norwood Elementary School. And they had that open classroom, well, they fixed that open classroom. And it ended up, it cost a million dollars to do that. And they needed to do that for safety reasons and educational reasons. But when you look at that, this is one of the things that just about, about, they make those decisions that kind of frustrate you. Because I know as part of Norwood over the years, they have those three buildings. They have the gymatorium, they had the middle classroom, and then they have the original building. And the original building had sewage leaks in it, you know? And that building's still there. And that's one of the older buildings in the, in the county. And they didn't fix that. And then right here, if you look at the pictures of the gymatorium, you have on the one side, you have the new gymnasium that was built in 2009 at Locust. Look at what the kids play on at Locust to play basketball, right? Nice shiny, nice stands. And that's when we did that, the Rotary Club did that dictionary presentations of third graders. But that is the gymatorium at Norwood. And look at that, look at that. They have carpet. And if you notice, they're using duct tape to do the out of bounds line. And if you look in the, right above Rush Sharples' head right there against the wall, there's a basketball rim. And can you imagine having your kids practice layups and pop into the wall? I mean, and that was in the report. Yeah, they hate those Thursday layup practices, don't they? Okay, demographics, nationally and locally. And y'all, probably all know the big news, Toys R Us is going out of, going out of business. And I thought this was interesting. I saw this in a Washington Post article. That Toys R Us baby's problem is everybody's problem. And basically, so, and then the article was about, yeah, they've had, they have competition issues that's hurt them badly. And they're not blaming the whole thing on demographics, but part of the issue is demographics. And you could look at the birth rates, the US birth rates and sales for Toys R Us, and they have a chart. And as the birth rates go down, the sales at Toys R Us go down. And as the birth rates go up, they go up. And birth rates have fallen steadily and they hit their lowest point on record in 2016. So, okay, you have less people born in this country in 2016. And you have a government right now that wants to send illegal aliens back over the border and also cut our immigration, of legal immigration, in half. So where are the people gonna come from? They're gonna have kids, you know? And then this is projected population. I think you guys saw this, it was in a presentation to you guys. If you look at it, Stanley, and this, this is no different than many of the, many of the demographic graphs that I saw when I was sitting up there with you guys. Stanley County population is gonna grow to six, from 61,000 to 73,000 in 2036. And so that's why you gotta, and then you look at the breakdown, it's gonna grow mainly with elderly people. You see how it's, it's growing with the 60-plus category. And the schools, in 20 years, are gonna have less than 1,000 kids between growth, between 0 to 17 years old. Less than, less than 1,000 over a 20-year, a 20-year period. And then that's why sometimes people use figures about housing permits and single-family homes. Okay, that's only one part of the equation. What you gotta have to find, ask yourself, who's moving in there? Are they gonna be the elderly? And are they gonna have kids to go to school when you have this discussion about schools? Because like I said, part of this is just to hopefully explain to people, it's no one's real fault that we're losing kids in our schools. And it's predicted, and by the way, the guy who did the facility study back in 2000, 2015, he has a graph. And in the graph, it has the enrollment trends. And for this year, he had predicted 2,000, I'm sorry, 8,135 students. And I think he was pretty close within maybe 40 or 50 children. And then if you notice, it bottoms out to 2020 to 7,701 students in our thing. And that means a lot more money that's gonna not be coming in. So... Sales tax. Yeah, we're hungry to talk about this one, are we? If you look at it, man, we went to the well three times on that. You know, and I know we need money for education. And maybe, there may have been other times for that, but it's like, in the last, that's what, four years, it's a tough battle to, to get that passed. You really have to work really, really hard to get it done. And we, Stanley County has had the history of, you know, not passing a sales tax. And then they don't want their property taxes raised either. And then they say they want community schools. And that's why, so mainly I just want to bring this to you to put in to how we, I don't know if y'all have any questions or comments. And I appreciate y'all taking the time to do that. And hopefully y'all keep that into consideration. And, and last thing, I think I would hope you guys would have a discussion with the school board and sit down and have, have a hard talk with them. Because it ain't, it ain't gonna get any better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shudo. Any questions from board members?
Mr. Chairman, I have one.
Commissioner Swain.
Did your, did your numbers account for pre-K? I'm assuming you pulled from?
I pulled from there, whatever they, they count, let me look at, I got the... No, they don't, they don't count, they don't count pre-K in their numbers. They start at the, yeah, because when, anytime you get those ADM things and the total number of kids, they do not count the, the pre-K kids.
So that's, that's a federal allotment, I think, of money the schools receive. And my second, I, I don't know if it's a question more so than a statement. I think, I don't, I don't dispute demographics. I, I don't ever dispute demographics because they are what they are. I, I think I dispute how some current House rulings and like House Bill 90, for instance, the K3 class size. That's gonna really affect, just by my numbers, it seems, just looking at the same data you're looking at.
Correct.
We're gonna have to add 20 classrooms, K3 countywide, just to meet that mandate over the next four years.
Yeah.
So, you know, I don't, when we talk about consolidation, I think it's a dangerous game. But I, I think we have to take that into consideration and look at those cla, actual classrooms, not how many necessarily, necessarily the students it can hold. We have to make sure we've got students that, that can be there or the, our student counts are correct, I guess.
Correct, correct. And that's part of the whole, the whole equation.
And I, I think that's what's going on and with your, your high school counts. You know, when you look at those, your teacher counts for high school, I think you have 29. I think some of our teacher counts are off.
Well, and that thing is, because like you said, they have the, it's skewed because you only have a, you, how many do you have at Stanley Academy? Maybe a few and that skews.
I think if you do the math with.
But, but like I said, it does, it skews the numbers with every single district in the state. Because they don't just do that for Stanley County. That's how they relate at the numbers.
If you just look at our four traditional high schools, I did the math with numbers you provided, and it comes up to an average of 572. So it, you know, it, it's all in how you look at the demographics.
I just, I just did it with, what came off of there. And that's why I put the thing up, and I'm glad you called to clarify it.
Right. And I think that, you know, I would caution that when we look at this, we've got an increasing population of exceptional children that are in low class count, counts. And we're gonna have to have classrooms to put those in.
Well, you got like, how many thousands you have there to, seats to put them in somewhere?
Well, you do, but that's based off of DPI class allotments and what the school will hold. You know, if, if they come to me and say, "I can only put six kids in this classroom," that class capacity becomes six. It doesn't become 30.
Well, you got plenty there to do. And one, one thing to consider too, and we talked about this, and this is just the school board's decision. You need to have these tough things. I tell you what, consolidating high schools, okay? You almost, to me, they almost have to start with the high schools. If you close two high schools and combine it into one, then you have two high schools which hold a lot of kids with pretty big capacity levels. Then you could perhaps move the middle schools into the old high schools. And then you have the middle schools that you could consolidate. I mean, there's just a lot of stuff. And it's, it's not to go here and to just make things. But, but there has to be a conversation about that. And if they don't want to use mobile home, mobile units in this thing, they have the power to, to get, to get rid of them.
I think our current school board is pretty open to doing away with mobile units just from a safety standpoint in today's world.
Yeah, well, they haven't, they haven't mentioned it in the last, the last year and a half. So maybe they'll mention it now. And then, then, then that's where we need to have the, that's why we need to have this conversation. Because when they get, get kids out of mobile units and then all of a sudden they have to start sending kids to another school district, they have to be ready to handle that fight. Because I'm telling you, a lot of people do not want to change their, it's just, it's not just Stanley County. That's true almost all across the good old US of A. But anyway, any other questions?
Any other questions, Commissioners? Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, see you guys.
Item six, consent agenda. What's the, please?
Move to approve as, as presented.
Got a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Morgan. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. All right, we are down to public comment. Didn't have anyone sign up? Anyone out there wishing to speak? John Edwards from Oakboro, come on up, John. Good evening, John.
Good evening. Chairman, thank you. Commissioners, thank you for your time.
Commissioners, thank you for your time and your service. My name is John Edwards. Uh, I have a bit of a raspy voice, so forgive that. Um, uh, as many of you guys know, I am a candidate for school board. Uh, Mr. Shudo has given us some, um, you know, I was just taking notes, I'm trying to read them here as he was going through, and, uh, and I can appreciate his information, I can appreciate him and his concern and passion for our schools. However, I can tell you that myself and, and many of you would know Anthony Graves, who's also running for school board, he couldn't be here tonight. There's probably not two people, two people in the county that has spent as much time as we have covering this exact data that you heard about tonight. And, um, for example, you hit the nail on the head with the state mandates coming. You can't count doorways and say thirty kids, thirty kids, thirty kids, thirty kids, doesn't work like that, the state's not going to allow it. What does matter is cons, is, uh, context and perspective. So with that said, what I wanted to ask you guys tonight is to reserve judgment on what you've heard here, and allow me and Mr. Graves to come and present the same data, but with the correct context and perspective. And I'll give you a quick example of why that matters. Uh, Mr. Shudo pointed out that Oakboro had lost eighteen kids this year. But what you don't realize or may not know about Oakboro is, Oakboro's a choice STEM school, it's not a district at school, which means a couple of things when it comes to enrollment. Number one, it means that we don't have a district. So if a kid or a family moves to Oakboro, they're in the middle of the school year, they're not allowed to come to Oakboro School. It's not even an option. If they live inside of the city limits of Oakboro, they would be, they would go to Aquadale. If they live in the Oakboro proper, uh, on the other side, they would go to Stanfield. So that's not an option to bring a kid in. Second, Oakboro being a choice STEM works both ways. Oakboro has a choice. We have kids at Oakboro with many, many absentees, they're sent back to their district. We have kids with discipline problems, they're sent back to their districts, and that's the way that school was set up. So that can maybe explain why some of their law is in none of their gang. Also, while I appreciate the information, the, um, demographer report that he spoke about, and I remember that well, and he said, we bottomed out. What he didn't tell you is, after we bottom out, for the next five years, we have a steady gain of students by the same demographer. So, there again. And then the last page of his report also clearly shows that we gained roughly a thousand students in the county over the next fifteen years also. So, you know, what I would ask is you reserve judgment, that we will put in a request in short order to bring this data to you in what we believe is a correct context and a better perspective, and then you draw your conclusions from that. So thank you for your time, and, and Peter, thank you for, for what you do also. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else? Seeing none. All right, board comments. Uh, start this end, Commissioner Morgan, comments?
Uh, first off, I'd just like to offer my condolences to the Effer family, uh, on behalf of all of us here. Um, and, uh, also, for the public who doesn't know, a lot of, a couple of us Commissioners were able to go to the White House this, uh, last week. Uh, we were invited up there, uh, for a meeting, uh, which I think it was an honor to be up there, to be honest, and then also, uh, it was a great learning experience, um, how the White House is hopefully wanting to work, uh, better with local governments. Um, so hopefully, in the future, we'll, we'll see how that pans out, but seems to be on the right track.
Uh, Commissioner Law Hahn.
I do have a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. Speaking on the same line of what, uh, Commissioner Morgan stated, we heard some great speakers and some information that was released while we were in Washington. Uh, one in particular, and I think these numbers probably have been out there, but we're not hearing what's really happening in Washington through the mainstream media, but one statement that was made was, there were two-point-three million jobs added since January of two thousand and seventeen, which is big. Uh, Dr. Ben Carson was there, who was the HUD Secretary, and he made the statement about how to reduce the potential of becoming a person of poverty. And he talked about things that you can do to prevent that, and I thought this was interesting. He stated that to stay out of, uh, keep your chances of being in poverty, uh, less, to, matter of fact, two percent, you need to finish high school, and I think this is good advice for any citizen. You need to get married, you need to wait until you're married to have a child. And if you do those things, uh, it reduces the possibility down to two percent of you becoming a person of poverty. And he should know, because he's in the charge of the HUD, which I thought was very interesting. The other fact that I want to talk about is, uh, Mark Short, who's Assistant to the President, Director of Internal Affairs, he talked about items that have happened since the tax relief. And I knew a lot of companies have given bonuses and/or raises or both, but last week, he stated that four hundred and fifty-two companies have given bonuses and pay increases since the tax plan passed, which I thought was very interesting. And he did make the statement, we don't think that's crumbs. And some politicians do. I think it's great that that has taken place. And the last thing I want to talk about, doesn't have anything to do with the Washington trip, but it has to do with, uh, the Central Line of Council of Government. There's a regional conference entitled Creative Solutions for Thriving Communities. It's on Thursday, April the twelfth, from, uh, registration somewhere about eight-thirty, but it runs till about four o'clock. It can be held at the Harris Conference Center, uh, on Harris Campus Drive in Charlotte. I would encourage any Commissioner that can take that day to go to this conference. I can tell you that the City of Albemarle, some of the council members, plus some of the staff, will be attending, and I would encourage some of our administration and any Commissioner to please go to this, because we need to hear all we can hear about being a thriving community. And it takes more than just one city, it takes towns, it takes city, it takes the county. So let me encourage you to attend. I have signup brochure, I think Tyler can register us if we decide to go spend the day in Charlotte to hear this information. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Law Hahn. Uh, Commissioner Louder. Commissioner Effer.
Just one quick one, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Senior Advisory Committee had a meeting last week, and, uh, we should be hearing something from the feasibility study that this board approved. Uh, maybe Andy might have some more information on that, but hopefully, we will hear that in April, so, uh, just want you to be aware of that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Swain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had one comment. Uh, my takeaway from the, the meeting, uh, at the White House this past week was the, the push for infrastructure. Typically, when infrastructure money comes down from the federal government, it comes down to your state government, and then it gets divvied out however they see fit by some random formula that is generated somewhere that typically favors large municipalities such as Charlotte, Wake County, Raleigh, uh, those, the, the legislation that they're trying to push down, uh, is, would earmark of large percentage of that for rural communities. So the state would not have an option but to push that, that money out to our rural communities for infrastructure, which is what, what we work so hard to upgrade in some areas and add initially in others, and I, I think that was a big, that was a big benefit that I saw. So I encourage all of us to, to keep talking to Congressman Hudson and our Senate delegation to, to encourage that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Swain. Vice Chairman McIntyre.
I'd just like to once again thank, uh, the Veterans Association for what they did tonight, and as I said, we didn't do it for the recognition, we did it because we believe in it. And, uh, on behalf of Sue and myself, I want to thank them, and, uh, you guys keep a good secret, don't you?
Thank you, Vice Chairman McIntyre. Um, I'd like, uh, Commissioner Morgan would just offer condolences to, um, the Effer family, and, uh, please, uh, everyone, keep your, keep, uh, those folks in your prayers and, uh, all of our public safety folks, uh, losing one of their own. Also like to thank Vice Chairman McIntyre for all your service, that was a, a nice award to receive, and, uh, Commissioner McIntyre's always been a true statesman and, uh, going above and beyond, uh, for Stanley County, so thank you. Uh, just remind everyone, we've got a note in here, I know we've got another meeting in between, but, uh, just keep in mind on your, uh, put on your calendar, Monday, April sixteenth at four-thirty, we've got a joint meeting with the Library Board of Trustees. Um, and our next scheduled meeting is Monday, April second at six P.M. And that's all we've got. What is pleasure to board?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Effer.
I would happily make a motion, we adjourn, sir.
Got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Vice Chairman McIntyre. All those in favor, stand up.